Good evening and welcome to the February 19th Town Council meeting. We have Boy Scout troop 50 here to observe town government, so I'd like to ask them if they would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. If the town clerk could please take attendance?
Counselor Breton?
Here.
Counselor Forrest?
Here.
Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Counselor Latina's not here yet. Counselor Lesser?
Here.
Counselor Ralph?
Here.
Counselor Spinella will not be here tonight. Deputy Mayor Martino?
Here.
And Mayor Morin Bellon?
Here. Thank you. We have no hearings this evening, so our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public have five minutes to speak. If you'd please state your name and address. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak? Come on up. If you would just come to the podium and make sure you speak into the microphone, please. Yes.[170.23][170.23](laughter) You need a little moral support? Just pull the microphone down. There you go. Thank you.
I'm sorry, repeat.
Oh, just if you would state your name and your address, please, and then you can make your remarks.
Geraldine Meyerini from Weathersfield.
And your street address?
Prospect Street.
Thank you.
Allen Close, Partridge Drive, Rock Hill.
And I'm Peter Swanky, 75 Center Street.
Thank you.
We're here because we want to bring to your attention regarding Follybrook Boulevard in terms of perhaps there's an ordinance that we cannot park overnight, but we're wondering whether that ordinance can be amended for that section of town, so the tenants and their guests would be able to? And the reason is because, as you know, the complex has grown tremendously, and we have many guests, and we don't want those guests to be taking the spots of our tenants. So, and I've spoken to Lieutenant Mitney at Lenn, and he suggested that we come to you and present this to you, if that ordinance can be amended. And the reason why we're also asking for that is because of safety reasons for our tenants. We have a number of single parent, and we don't want them to be walking home when it's cold with their children, their groceries, and many of them have called and they're very, you know, concerned about walking in the ice and in danger. But now, since the town has built a solid white line in that whole area from Jordan Lane onto Victoria Road, we thought we'd ask you if tenants and guests can just park right in front of their homes. It would also be a crime issue, too, because rather than hiding behind some of the parking areas in the back and then they have to walk all the way to the apartment, that would also would make them feel safer to get home. And also, we have tenants who work around, you know, at night, early in the morning they have to go to work or come back very late at night, so that would give them a better place to park, because most of the buildings are along the street, and they'll be able to see their car, feel more comfortable coming in and out, and I would think that both in terms of safety, crime, and injury, because I wouldn't want them to be walking in a snowstorm or in ice as we've been having, and, you know, fall and so forth, for their health. So, under those conditions, I'm just wondering whether the council would consider amending your ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. We don't engage in back and forth here, but we can certainly ask the town manager to look into parking situation in that area.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Bye.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Mazarella?
Good evening. Tom Mazarella, 600 Wilken Hill Road. Just want to speak a little bit about the grant money for the dump truck. Just so you're aware, the little follow-up. The pictures that you received in your packets for the photographs of the rust in the truck, just want everybody to be aware that that's the dump body that you're looking at that is rusted. It's not the frame, it's not the chassis of the truck, it's the dump body portion. Doesn't have anything to do with safety. It's not like the frame's going to ride out and the truck's going to break in half. There's also a picture of the exhaust system that appears to be rusty. It's pretty common, most exhaust systems are rusty like that, and it's also an item that can be readily replaced, not an item that's hard to obtain. I did some looking into the fact that the Sterling trucks are no longer manufactured. Several years ago, the condition was much worse, and it was very difficult to get a lot of the Sterling common parts. We're not talking about the engine, the transmission, the drivetrain. Those type of components are readily available. We're talking about things that are particular to the cab, to the body. If you need to buy a door handle, you couldn't find them. If you needed to buy windshield wiper, motor, mechanism, you had trouble finding them. In the last couple of years, there have been a big improvement in parts availability for Sterling, a lot of aftermarket parts, so that's really not a big issue. The bigger issue that I saw was the finance department spreadsheet that they attached. And you can see where the amount of financed items is just tremendously ramping up. In the past year, you know, we put on those two fire trucks for a million-two, approximately a million-two. There was a handful of other items, all that were not budgeted. These are items that got thrown in. The turf was in that category. It was not a budgeted item. And we just continue to increase the amount of spending on our town credit card, and I think that needs to be reduced drastically. From looking at the way this flows out, I would say you shouldn't incur any additional leases for at least another four or five years. Wait for it to start getting paid off before you go out and buy something else. The, you know, the grant seems good at the onset. Someone's going to give us $50,000 that we don't have. But when you look at the realistic, what's happening is, you don't really need the truck. Sure, it would be nice to replace it. You're going to replace it eventually, but right now, you don't need the truck. So, you get 25% off. You still have to come up with $150,000, and I just don't think we're in a position to do that. When you throw in the financing that, and it does say it's preliminary for discussion, but you throw in the financing, $38,000 a year for five years, it's 190. You're paying 160 for the truck, so you're paying $30,000 to finance this. Seems high to me, but it's up over 7%. But anyways, you're paying $30,000 to finance it, you're only getting 50, so what's the benefit, the 20? I think there's other options. You could possibly look at replacing the dump body. The one that was on there was obviously steel. They now produce the dump bodies in stainless steel, corrosion-resistant steel, so you don't have the corrosion problem over time. And I believe that's what's specked out in the new truck. So, you could go out and buy a new dump body, put it on the existing Sterling truck, and the truck only has 50,000 miles on it. It could conceivably go for many more years. And when you eventually do scrap it out, take the stainless steel dump body off of it and put it on the next truck that you buy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I, too, looked at the agenda and the portion of the rust on these portions of this truck, and I have to agree with Tom. You don't need to get rid of the truck, and I didn't realize that the parts were still readily available for the Sterling. And if that's the case, I don't think you should be jumping into another vehicle, as Tom suggested. Probably the dump, the dump portion should be replaced with something that won't rust. But looking at this, no. You've got a lot of years left on this vehicle, and I would, and if you're going to get 50 grand and it's going to cost you 200-plus, where's the other money going to come from? And Tom mentioned again, something that I was going to talk about, was the schedule for the leases. I've been talking to you about these leases for some time now. I call these leases and all of your other financing eternal life programs, because that's exactly what it is, eternal life. You never can go back unless you're ready to bite the bullet on leasing. Once you started it, and you had some savings in those first few years by borrowing, now in order to stop it, and as interest rates do go up, you're going to want to stop, because it's going to go way beyond what you want to spend or what we should be spending for financing. But what happens is, you're going to have to still pay those off and buy new vehicles as you go along, such as police cruisers, and you're going to have to pay cash for those, and it's going to really be something tough to bite into. It's a shame that the people who suggested this, go on lease, did what they did and put the entire town into this kind of a risk, because going on lease in this kind of work, this kind of business, is not good at all. So, I would recommend you turn down to $50,000. Forget buying a new vehicle, truck, dump truck, and get that old Sterling back into working order. I mean, I keep seeing parts or items that are in your public works group that have to be constantly replaced. You don't believe in hanging on to things and making them last, maybe because you're spending other people's money. Maybe that's why you do it. But you're getting it, you're getting us in a big bind financially by doing this. And also, reading the article in the paper about Lamont seeks a debt diet. Are we going to go on a debt diet? I think that's what Tom is talking about, a debt diet. I'm talking about a debt diet. We shouldn't be going out, continuing to borrow, and our taxes continue to climb, and there's no end to it. Again, eternal life programs. You know, you're going to buy that farm up on Wilken Hill, what's it called? Highland Street? Highland and Collier. And I keep sending you, and I keep talking to you about properties that are selling in our general area. And there's such a difference in the price per acre that you're paying or going to pay for that Wilke, the Keisha farm versus what regular land is selling for. And actually, we've only seen a few parcels even sold over the, since this all began, since the summer. I've only found a few parcels that sold. I continue to see more properties coming on the market, and they're not selling. Things are not moving. I don't know why. I mean, I think I know why, but I, who wants to pay taxes on property that just lays there? Get rid of it. Who wants to live in the state of Connecticut? Get out of here. Let's get rid of it. It's that kind of thing. Now, I just sent you a number of properties to go look at. Couple of them were brand-new, only a few within a week or a couple of weeks on the market. I mean, down in Middlesex County, was it, down in Berlin on the Chamberlain Highway, there's 17.4 acres that just came on the market for $275,000. That's a going farm. You're buying a farm that doesn't even work.
If you could, please, if you turn this up a few times.
For $75,000. And, you know, at $275,000, divide that by the 17 acres, it comes out to $15,700 an acre.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
And you're planning on spending $75,000. I'll be back, madam.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move into council reports. Are there any council members who have reports this evening? Deputy Mayor?
In the past two weeks, the Capital Improvement Advisory Commission finished their work and came up with a budget for the coming year for CIP projects. That's being put together by the town engineer and forwarded to planning and zoning for the 24 referral as per schedule, and they stayed within the $900,000 budget range that has been the same for the past few years.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three quick things. First, the Hunger Action Team, which meets every month to come up with strategies to help those in our community who are food insecure or hungry, wanted me to make a little announcement that every other Wednesday from 9:00 to 9:30 at 55 Lancaster Road is the Mobile Food Chair. So, it's a truck with food where residents can get food. There's no cost to this, and we currently have about 100 people who use that service, but it's open, and we want to spread the word that's available. Secondly, last week, the Veterans Committee met, and I may have reported, but they've appointed two co-chairs, Karen Opper and Doug Shipman. And a couple of things that we're working on, again, is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, which will be June 6, 2019, partnering with the high school. It'll be a big celebration on the high school football field that day with about 20 to 25 veterans. And also, the Veterans Committee has decided to do a retreat, to do some other strategic planning. And lastly, the Human Rights Commission met. They're also a new committee, not quite as far along as the Veterans Committee, and they're still trying to figure out kind of what will be their main objectives and their goals, and they're starting a little strategic planning themselves. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Anybody else? Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, there were a bunch of new commissioners that were appointed by the town manager to the Economic Development and Improvement Commission, which was recently reformed commission. And the economic, the EDIC, the Economic Development and Improvement Commission, excuse me, the new commissioners were to the redevelopment agency, and the Economic Development and Improvement Commission will be meeting on Thursday to outline a plan to work together with the newly-appointed redevelopment agency, to figure out how they should be working together and time schedules, which will, I think, likely move the Economic Development and Improvement Commission from an afternoon meeting to an evening meeting. And so, the commissioners, which some of them serve on both committees, can work out a good plan for moving forward and seeing if we can redevelop our town and increase our tax base and facilities throughout the town. So, it's kind of some new energy coming through and was recently appointed, so thank you, Kathy, for those appointments.
Thank you. Counselor Breton?
Thanks, Mayor. So, this is, I just wanted to make an announcement. The Bike-Walk Stakeholders Committee is meeting again this month. This is twice this month, on February 28, right here in these chambers at 6:30, and the public is welcome to, the whole purpose of the group, for those who don't know, is to make, help make Weathersfield more bike-walk friendly. There's all kinds of ideas, and there's been a lot of studies done and research done on the layout of where we'd like to, you know, and put some routes together, bike routes, and make it more safe in areas of the town. So, like I said, everybody's welcome, and now's a time, really great time to be part of it and to provide some input as to sort of where we go from here. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move into council comments. Any council members have comments this evening? No council comments? Okay. Kathy, this is your last meeting up here with us, so I'm just going to take a minute and publicly thank Kathy Bagley. She has been a really fabulous interim town manager. We appreciate all of her time and all of the work that has gone into keeping the town running, and I'm so happy that we'll continue to have Kathy in town. She'll be back in her job as Park and Rec Director and Director of Social and Youth Services. So, at our next meeting, we will have Gary Evans here as the new town manager, and Kathy, I hope you'll be here, too, to make sure we're all on track moving forward, but thank you for all you've done in the last six months. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.[1341.75][1341.75](applause)
And now, on to town managers' report. Do you have anything to report?
No, I don't have anything to report. It's...
I'm leaving.[1353.15][1353.15](laughter)
It's certainly been a pleasure, and you've heard me say this a lot, that without the staff in the building and in the town to assist me, they made my job easier, and I appreciate all the help and assistance from the council members, too. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Town Clerk's communication, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I do. I have, on May 9, we're going to have a shred event from noon to 3:30, and it's going to be at the Pickin Community Center.
We're all invited?
You are all invited. The town is invited, whoever would like to come and get their documents shredded.
And that information will be on the website?
It is on the website already.
Great. Good. Thank you. Okay, moving into council action, acceptance of resignations from boards and commissions. I believe we have one tonight. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the resignation from the Central Region Tourism District of Katie Sullivan, 79 Wright Road, whose term was 9/17/18 to 6/30/21.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any council comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Appointments, I don't believe we have any this evening. We'll move to unfinished business. Do we have a motion?
Motion to take the tax deferment program off the table and take no further action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there, Kathy, do you want to bring us up to speed on this?
Sure. This program had been approved by the state legislature if towns on a voluntary basis wanted to offer federal employees that went through the government shutdown that began on December 22 to allow, to give them the ability not to pay their taxes right away. What's since happened is the shutdown has gone, is over at this point in time, and the town did not receive any requests for that program, so I'm recommending at this time not to move forward with it.
Is there any council comment on that? Counselor Ralph?
No. Thank you, Kathy, for the explanation of that. I know there were a lot of questions. I'm not going to ask any questions this time, because two weeks ago, we did ask the questions, and we did table it. I think it's just a smart idea not to, you know, just simply jump in because others are doing it. It is an unfortunate situation that the shutdown did occur. Hopefully, it won't, excuse me, occur in the future, but if it does, maybe this could be something that we would look at and, you know, do a little bit more due diligence beforehand so that affected parties could be helped by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. We move into other business, Historic Document Preservation Program Grant. Do we have a motion?
Yes. I move to, move to have the interim town manager approve the town clerk as the designated person to sign and submit the Historical Documents Preservation Program grant for $7,500 for the town of Weathersfield.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy?
I know.
I wish it were $7,500.
That would have been nice, for sure. This is an annual program where the town clerk is able to apply to the state for a grant to get targeted money to help preserve our historic records, and we've been fortunate over the past several years to get this, and this helps us continue to preserve all the, both the land records and the records that the town clerk keeps.
Thank you. Dolores, did you have anything to add?
No, that's pretty much it. It's the money, part of the money that I collect for the state of Connecticut is, this is, they are letting us get some of it back.
Thank you. Are there any council comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next is police video security system. Do we have a motion? Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the purchase of the video security system for street cameras in the police department building at a cost of $659,364.62 using the asset forfeiture funds.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy?
This is an opportunity for our police department to purchase this equipment with their asset forfeiture funds. It's something that the police department has been working on for a long time, and this really would be putting a camera system on both the Silastine Highway and the Berlin Turnpike, and as part of that process, it would also work with having a feed right into the Hartford Central Police District where they already have their camera systems and video systems set up. The chief is here tonight to give you more of an explanation on it, but the second piece of this is both that part of the grant and also the grant to upgrade the cameras in the police department themselves.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief. Thank you for coming. You didn't think we'd let you stay in the back, did you?[1693.15][1693.15](laughter)
Thank you. I'm here to answer any kind of question, but I'll just go into a little bit more of the detail of the system that we're talking about, and we have been working on this for a long time. It's something that I think will enhance the safety and security of our businesses and our residents in Weathersfield. In fact, I think it's going to be so great that we may actually deter crime in the future because of the fact that we'll have this system, the state-of-the-art system that Hartford already has. I also worked it out with the other six towns, the six other chiefs of police around Hartford, and we're all going to be going into this eventually, and we'll have a pretty secure metropolitan area around Hartford, Hartford and around Hartford. It's just small in the beginning, and it's only going to be 12 locations, and the 12 locations, the cameras that are there, it's not just one camera. In that box will be multiple cameras that actually have a 360-degree view, and one of the cameras in there will actually have a pan tilt zoom, so we can actually look in on whatever. If there's an accident, if there's a robbery, or whatever occurs, we'll be able to actually zoom in on that, and it will actually enhance officers' safety going, responding to those type of scenes, too. So, there's a lot of aspects to this. It's a lot of money. It's something that, one of the reasons why I've been relatively conservative with the asset forfeiture money through these years, is because this was the plan from way back when. when. Hartford, what happened with Hartford, Hartford had a hodgepodge of cameras and systems. Some of the business, like Park Street Business Association, actually made purchases of cameras and gave them to Hartford to utilize. And there was other cameras around through the city. What Hartford did was they realized that it just, it didn't work well, having all those different kinds. So what they did was they contracted with the company, the same company, Vulcan, out of South Windsor, and redid the entire system in Hartford under one platform. It's called the Milestone Platform. That's the software that runs the system. That changed everything, and they've solved some really serious crimes in Hartford, including a homicide within two hours that probably would never have been solved. One of the most, the better examples, too, was there was an attempted kidnapping of a 10-year-old girl downtown one day, and the only description that the girl could give was that it was a white van. There's actually software, it's called BriefCam, that will filter out all this, all extraneous stuff. So even though they might have 1,000 cars going through an intersection, it will actually filter out every vehicle except a white van. They caught that guy within less than a couple of hours, and I don't know how many of more he would've done in the future if it wasn't for that apprehension. And again, it was all through the cameras. It's almost like, I know, I almost hate saying, this is almost like television, you know? Because all the years, I've been saying, you know, real life isn't like television, but this has really brought us around to where we now be able to solve crimes, prevent crimes, and I think it will really enhance the safety and security of everybody in this town. It's what I've been trying to attain for many years now, and this will be my legacy, I hope.
I have a couple of questions, and then I'll ask the councilors if they do. Will the, will this system interface with the existing cameras? Don't we already have some cameras in town?
No, those are the LPRs. License plate readers.
Okay.
No, they're two completely different things. The LPRs are great, and we're using them, and we have solved crime with LPRs. In fact, I wish I had brought the list. There was, there's a whole list of cases that we've solved with those. In fact, I just heard on the radio, East Hartford had a car stolen out of a driveway that was warming up with 16 firearms in it. And they checked our LPRs to see if it came into Weathersfield. So far, so good. But those are the, that's the kind of stuff that we can do with the technology that's out there today.
And then my other question is, can you speak to any maintenance costs or costs that we will then, you know, once we purchase these through the asset forfeiture funds, then the maintenance and so forth will be the responsibility of the operating budget? So if you could just talk to those costs?
Yes. Okay. The maintenance costs are relatively minor, relatively. The first year, there's zero cost. After that, the Milestone Platform, that, the software that runs the whole system, will be $97 per camera per year. So 12 cameras times 90, $1,200. It's on a three-year basis, we'd have to pay it once every three years. The Vulcan, what they're, they don't have a maintenance plan. There will be no maintenance on that. And I like the reason why they have for no maintenance is because with a maintenance fee, you're paying maintenance on something that may not break, but you're still paying the maintenance fee. What they do is they suggest that we put aside in the budget every year between about $8,000. If we use that money to fix a camera or replace a camera after the first year, so be it. If we don't, then that money just gets turned back into the town at the end of the year. So it's a much better system. I like that system. And they're so confident in their product, and it's one of the reasons why it's probably more expensive, too, is the fact that we won't have those breakdowns. That's the thing that kills these systems, and that was the problem that Hartford was having in the beginning. The pool, I don't know if you remember the pool, the kini pool? That camera system broke down, and that boy drowned in that pool, and they didn't know it. With this system, things like that shouldn't happen. And what I'd like to do is be able to do in the future is to build out that system. You know, we start with 12 cameras on the Silastine and the Berlin Turnpike, and eventually maybe start cutting across so we have more cameras going throughout town and we'll be able to catch other things that occur. Millwoods Park would be a good example in the future.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, and I definitely am supporting, you know, this proposal tonight, especially since we're able to use the asset forfeiture funds to purchase them. I mean, it's a definite win for the town.
Yeah, it's not something I would ever have been able to get out of the budget.
Thank you.
I know that.
Yeah. Are there council members that have questions? Deputy Mayor?
Chief, you said the 12 surrounding towns from Hartford are gonna be included?
Six.
Six. Will it be expanding out beyond that? For example, will Rocky Hill and them?
They'd be perfectly welcome to join in, but we're actually gonna tap into Hartford's system. Hartford's last camera is on Weathersfield Avenue, and I believe from our tower in the back of the police station, we'll actually have a direct line of sight to that camera. If not, then we'll have to maybe think about, you know, fiber or something like that. But once we're into that system, that's, and that really is the backbone of the system because what we need is, Hartford has three full-time employees, they're called crime analysts, and that's all they do is watch those cameras all day. Well, we don't have that capability. What I'm hoping to do is, again, for the future, is that the six towns are involved and we contribute towards one full-time person for the six towns. That would be relatively cheap. And we'll have a person there that will be able to run our systems all the time. I don't have the staff to run a system like this. We'll have the capability of going back and looking at something, but to actually, you know, predict crime, if you wanna call it that, then that's really an excellent aspect of that system.
Look, as I'm just visualizing it, it doesn't get expanded out if somebody comes from St. Hartford through Weathersfield and continues on into Rocky Hill. You don't know where it goes from that point.
No, but if, let's say Rocky Hill, just giving you an example, let's say Rocky Hill has an armed robbery of one of the motels on the Silastine Highway. Well, if they go north, we're gonna pick them up on our cameras and we'll be able to track them all the way up. Plus, we have the LPRs to actually get the license plate. So each system is built upon the other, and it will help us solve crimes in the future, even if it's for another jurisdiction. Because the next time, they may not go down as far as Rocky Hill. And what I'm hoping for, I mean, the ultimate goal of this is that we're doing so well with solving these crimes that people won't come into Weathersfield to commit the crimes anymore. Of course, that's pie in the sky kind of thinking, but I don't see why it wouldn't work.
Thank you.
Counselor Hurley?
Hi, Chief.
Hi, Mike.
How do you protect the privacy of residents, normal residents, that get caught on these cameras? Say Hartford has access, other towns have access?
I don't know what privacy, because this is all in public. It's on a pole and on the Silastine Highway. Again, I'll give you an example. We had an officer working a traffic job at Silastine and Maple, and he saw a car go by that, that just, for some reason or other, it stuck in his mind. It was a green Pontiac. It was just weird kind of a Pontiac. I can't remember, it was like a GT something or whatever, and it just caught his eye. He remembered it. It was dark green. We had a shoplifting robbery down at one of the, like Marshalls, and whoever described the car, described the car like that car. Well, he was there, he saw it, he was able to remember, and he actually remembered a part of the marker plate, which eventually solved that crime. That's all these cameras will be doing, with a lot better accuracy and a lot better sight.
How long do you keep?
30 days.
30 days, and then it's gone?
Yes. The system couldn't hold any more than that. And that's, and those are pretty big servers, because that's a lot of video coming through.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Chief. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. I think this is an important crime-fighting tool, and I'm looking forward to seeing us utilize this, but, and I'm glad it's not part of the operating budget. But I do have a question on the deterrent. So we've had, as you know better than us, kind of an increase in crime, particularly the break-ins, car break-ins, but other forms of crime in the last couple of years here in Weathersfield. How would you see this as potentially deterring crime, particularly like break-ins? And would you, I would say, promote or publicize or market that we have cameras as a way to deter, that, you know, oh, they have cameras? So talk a little bit about the deterrents you mentioned.
Okay. First off, Hartford didn't tell anybody about their cameras for a long time. Then they did. You do get some of the naysayers that come out about that. Again, some of the questions about the privacy. I don't see how it could possibly be anything about privacy because it's out in the public. It's out on the street. I don't know how much expectation of privacy you have driving along the Silastine Highway, and if you're not committing any crimes, you shouldn't have anything to worry about whatsoever. We're not looking for any other reason than if a crime occurs. We had a bank robbery not too long ago, right over here on the Silastine Highway. That was pretty bad. That would've helped us track that car much better than it actually turned out. And it was a dash cam that solved that crime for us. So like I said, one system builds upon the other. So, yeah, I'm hoping, I'm not saying we're gonna go out and advertise on the front page that, don't come to Weathersfield because we have cameras, but what I am thinking is that eventually, and this is kind of the reputation that we had from many, many years ago, that we depended on. That's one of the reasons why Weathersfield has the lowest crime rate of all six-ring towns, is that we have, the police department's had a reputation of being aggressive, of stopping cars, of looking for criminals, of stopping crime before it even happens, some cases, and after it happens. What I'm saying is, is that reputation is invaluable. And what I'm hoping is that this, the camera system will enhance that reputation. We'll never get crime-free, I mean, that's just not possible, but the more tools that we have in our belt, the better off we're gonna be in the future in regards to crime. And believe it or not, I truly believe that criminals pay attention to that kind of stuff. If they get caught in Weathersfield two or three times, they're not coming back. They'll go someplace where they won't get caught. And unfortunately for them, but good for us.
Got it. Thank you.
Counselor Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, welcome, Forrest.
Hi, Mayor.
Can you give us a little description about how these cameras are mounted? Do they go on, you know, at intersection poles? Are they on buildings? How big are they? What do they sort of look like? There were no pictures, sort of, of the device.
They're, they're in a cylinder that will, that was one of the major stumbling blocks to this all along, was the fact that, how are you gonna put them up there? I had a battle with Eversource and then the same battle with Frontier on the LPRs for two years, two and a half years. And there's a state law that says that every municipality gets 12 inches of game free. They tried the charges, they tried the, believe me, it was a battle and a half. I tried to work with DOT because I thought they might be, would like this system because they would actually be able to watch the Silastine Highway themselves for traffic, for accidents, and for things like that. But DOT was not easy to work with. In fact, they don't return calls. And I can't tell you how many calls they made. Finally, Derek called somebody that he knew, and they just said, no. So then I find out, then I find out that I didn't know this before, and I guess it's relatively recent, too, maybe that's why, is that the streetlights, those arms, we own those, and the streetlights.
Especially now.
And I, right. And I talked to the company, and they can use those arms to put, mount the cameras. They'll be in a cylinder, there'll be multiple cameras in those cylinders. It's not that big, it's not, those cameras are high-resolution cameras that can see pretty well and pick up plates and descriptions of cars, and it's a pretty, pretty good system. I wish I could show you. I've seen Hartford's system, I've seen how it works and what they can do with it. It's absolutely phenomenal.
So it's a cylinder-type device?
Yeah, I think I have a picture.
Mounted on a street lamp? I didn't see a picture of it in the background.
Yeah, because it was actually from another company. But it's, it's not much different than what you'd see on a pole anyways, you know, almost like, much smaller than, with the, the trans, what do you call it? Transformer. It's much smaller than that, but kind of along those same lines.
Got it. So I don't know if you were here for the meeting, but maybe, you know, a meeting or two ago, we were talking with Derek, and I talked to the town manager, because we also have funds that are looking to be allocated for various intersection improvements. And around town, we certainly see, there's new poles and stuff going up.
Right.
So it would seem that in the future, it would ask that you at least coordinate when we do intersection improvements, that that might be the type of thing that we have sort of complete intersections, in a way.
I talked to Derek about that before, and the only caveat to this is, and that's one of the good things about this system, it's almost like our radio system, I don't know if you remember, the P-25? It's interoperable.
I've heard through several radio systems.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, no, the first one, the Motorola, was proprietary.
Right.
The second system, the P-25, and that's the whole idea behind P-25 radio systems, is that it's interoperable. In other words, you, it's not, there's no proprietariness to the system.
Open source.
Right. And that's exactly what this is. As long as it's on that Milestone Platform, it doesn't matter what kind of camera you put up there. So no matter what happens with those intersections that you're talking about, as long as we can, we'd have to buy the license for Milestone to include those cameras, but you can put any camera on that system. It's, it's an open source. It's not, not open source, it's not proprietary.
Understood. Now, in the bid specs, there is, clearly this was like the original Hartford, or the Hartford bid that we're sort of probably piggybacking on.
Yeah.
There's a lot of labor when it comes to IT labor and electrical labor for each item, which is, whatever, 16 or 18 deep. And it does say that the labor is HART, H-A-R-T, which I'm thinking is the Hartford labor. Now, I don't know, is that the Hartford labor rate that they're using for this?
Yes. We got Hartford's cost. In other words, whatever they gave to Hartford. Because it's the first in this area, they got a lot of breaks. They got a lot of discounts, and we were able to piggyback off those discounts. In other words, we're getting Hartford's rates. If we hadn't, this would've been probably twice as much money.
So specifically, I was talking about the, certainly for the hardware, but this is for the labor.
Mm-hmm.
And is that the hard, what, do we know what, what labor is that? Is that, is that contract, is Hartford, the city of Hartford, under a different labor contract than we might be? Can we use our electricians and our labor to set these up?
No, this is strictly their electricians, their people that are gonna be putting in the insulation. That's the cost, those costs. I wouldn't want it any other way, to be honest with you, because these people are professionals, they know exactly what they're doing and how to do it. They're, and not that I'm saying that our electrician couldn't wire something, but I don't, this is all based on the warranty and the longevity of these cameras and what they're, and how they're doing it. So I wouldn't mess around with that at all.
And then on that thought, which is my last question, is can we talk about the longevity of the, of the system? It's a huge system, $700,000 system.
Yes.
And, you know, they're talking about, you talked about how you were very confident in its reliability, just reliability of the system, but of the hardware. What experience has this company had in other areas about these cameras are lasting, fill in the blank, five years, eight years, 10 years? They actually haven't destructed yet, we don't know how long they're gonna last.
Right. And that is the fact, the situation right now. Hartford has their cameras, Hartford has their systems, and it's only been up for a couple of years.
Right.
But there is no problems. They haven't had any problems. As far as I know, they did have to replace a camera that broke down or whatever, but that's what that money is put aside for. They don't, like I said, they don't have a maintenance system. But I could be a perfect example of what you're asking. We had, I don't know if you remember, in a brand-new police building that was built in 2002, I mean, we've been in there now 16 years.[1692.87] years.
I've heard of it.
We had problems with the doors. I guess the way the doors were designed, it was designed more for aesthetic reasons and not really for practical reasons. So, for the first 10 years that we were there, we had nothing but problems with those doors. The doors didn't shut, the doors didn't lock. One time, they would stay, they'd stay partly open, so the security of the building was in jeopardy. One time, actually, snow came into the building, and one of our officers slipped and fell on the snow-covered foyer. Anyways, so, actually, Mike Turner was the one who got a company to come in and fix those doors. It was expensive. It was $13,000 to fix those doors. This is the company that fixed those doors. We have never had an issue with that door again, and that's good seven, six, seven years ago.
So, although it says Hartford one camera broke of.
Yeah.
But they, is Hartford the only municipality that this company has installed these cameras at?
Yeah, it's a Connecticut company.
And they've only done one, I mean, in the entire nation, we're the second company to install this system, or the second municipality.
I believe they've, they've installed systems, especially the private companies and businesses and stuff like that, but this was the first municipal installation that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And so far, it's pretty good. And the fact is, is that they didn't push that maintenance fee that a lot of other companies do. I was kind of impressed by that.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Chief, what's the timeframe for this project?
Once I get the approval, there's, it's going to be relatively quick, I would, I would hope.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Next, we have the state grant for purchase of physical services dump truck. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Motion to approve an appropriation from the Capitol non-recurring expenditure fund to purchase a large dump truck at the cost of $207,462.23 and authorize funding sources as follows: A, acceptance of grant with proceeds of $49,086.05; and B, lease financing with proceeds of $158,376.18.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy?
This, this opportunity came up, we, the staff applied for a grant, and we're, we did receive the grant, and it's up to council whether or not we accept it or not. We hadn't originally planned on purchasing another dump truck in this budget year, but it came up unexpectedly. We talked about it at the workshop meeting, that this, we were replacing a Sterling truck that has some issues with it, so we're just looking now to see whether or not council is interested in accepting the grant and moving forward with purchasing a truck.
Thank you, and we have Sally Katz, Physical Services Director, here to answer any questions. Good evening, thank you for being here. Do you want to start with council questions?
Already got him, Wes.
We went over it last time.
We did.
Okay, no questions? Counselor Earl?
Well, why don't you indulge us with, I mean, I think there might be some people in the audience who don't know what we're going to be talking about.
Well, there's two things. As part of the VW mitigation award, the State of Connecticut has received funds to be able to give grants to municipalities who are replacing diesel, old diesel trucks with newer, cleaner-running vehicles. It is a one-time opportunity for this money, as the settlement has just come through. The truck that we are requesting to change is a truck that has a motor that was, that was built in 2005. It is a 2006 vehicle, so it is 13 years old, approaching 14 years old. I will say that we have been looking for Sterling parts, and the parts are not readily available. We recently had to try to replace part of the exhaust system on one of the trucks, and we were able to find a part in Kentucky, and we were told that it was the last one that was available. As we discussed before, Sterlings are no longer made, and while parts for certain aesthetic parts of the truck may be available, there are many parts that are no longer made. And so that is part of the reason why we are looking to replace this truck. There, some of the photos did take, most, a lot of them were taken of the dump body, which has rusted out, and also there are parts of the frame that have seen a degradation in the metal. These trucks are used all year round, even after every storm, through washing them, and as you saw with the dump bodies up and trying to get in there, the salt is a corrosive, it has gone through parts of the truck. Again, this is a vehicle that has been on the road for 13 years. It's a vehicle that is also used during the leaf collection, through hauling, out today hauling snow, even though it was, you know, long past the, the snowstorms. These trucks are used continuously for 12 months out of the year, and it is unfortunate that the vehicles that we use are expensive. There's no getting away from that. We look to purchase vehicles off the state contracts, where we would hope to get the best value and the best, the best cost, but these vehicles are expensive. They do last. Well, as I said, this vehicle that we are currently maintaining is 13 years old, and they go through a lot. To base a decision to say that something has 50,000 miles on it, the way that these trucks are used in town, they don't go out of town. They are being run throughout town. And so you're not going to see an exorbitant amount of miles on this type of vehicle, but what you are going to see is the, the wear and tear on the vehicle. And I would say that it's also lasted this long because of the fact that we do maintain our vehicles. We don't let them sit with the salt on them after storms. We don't let them sit with the leaf material. We wash these trucks constantly. We are maintaining them, we do as much preventative maintenance on them as we can. We then, when problems do arise, we try to work and get them repaired as quickly as possible. So, we are caretakers and stewards of the equipment that you have voted on for us to purchase, because we understand that this is taxpayer money going for equipment that most people don't have to deal with on an everyday basis. And it is equipment that is technologically advanced now and expensive, and we don't come to you asking for this frivolously. And so, when we get an opportunity to defray a quarter of that cost and look at the fact that we are looking at a vehicle that is over 13 years old, my staff and I really weighed that out and have come to you for this request in hopes that we would be able to, to work something out.
Thank you. Are there any council questions now or comments? Deputy Mayor?
Sally, thank you for your comments. You know, my goal this year was to try and either, you know, reduce or keep level the lease purchase in our budget this year, and this will definitely bring us way over. One of the reasons for not needing, you know, needing to replace this is because you say you can't get parts. I've said it before, if you can't get parts for something, we now have 3D printers that can print parts. I mean, the Air Force is buying, is printing their own, using these 3D printers to print, to get parts for F-16s, F-16s, and some of our other aircraft. I mean, I think there's got to be somewhere where we can get access to one of these 3D printers for something you can't get locally and speed up the process that way. So, I honestly, I can't vote for this tonight, I'm sorry.
Okay, understood. Anybody else? Counselor Forrest?
This is a tough one, because you're offered sort of a carrot in this particular purchase, and there is ongoing needs. I think that, although, when we look at it a little bit more globally, is this particular truck is mixed in with all of the needs of the town, including all of the vehicles, and there's concern about the leasing component, really it's a financing component, and that is a broader concern than this particular purchase, but some of the public discussed it today, and there is some merit to the sense of, like, how do you purchase ongoing operational costs and lease it out, which means there's a financing cost on top of that. So, there is sort of a concern about getting that, the leasing component, the financing component of operate, of really true operational equipment on our books and how we sort of manage that. There's also something that sounded a little bit funny with me, as we had a very honest conversation the last time, and that was the destruction of, although an older truck, but a functional truck in order to meet the particular requirements of this particular grant money, which is to remove the diesel and move over, which is a laudable goal, but I see that as more of a perfect use of the replacement when something is actually gone. And to destroy something that's generally functional, although I know that there are issues, and completely believe all that you're presenting, or all that's been presented to us, is, is a tough, is a tough pill when the purchase price is not more than, you know, more than simple, you know, petty cash, this is a large purchase. And of course, there's the broader budgetary concerns. And then if we look at, this might be sort of the year of the fire truck, which, or trucks, which is over a million dollars in expense for, you know, two pieces of equipment, and then we sort of get right back on the schedule. So, I think there's a real governance and a real weighing in this particular purchase, but on the scales of, certainly, there's lots of benefits, but weighing all the rest of the demands of our resources, I think I'm leaning toward, I think we've got to hold off on this one until maybe another day, but I'm just certainly one person, but that's at least just sort of the analysis as I see it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Sure the Boy Scouts are thrilled with this conversation about a truck. It's a really cool truck, though.
But we're not getting.
Maybe next. The fire truck, we are getting, and it's really cool, too.
Counselor Latina?
Sally, I just have a quick question. How many dump trucks are in the fleet right now?
Right now, there are, we have the chart here.
Fifty.
Yeah, there's fifty.
I didn't want to miscount. So, it's not like we're not going to have availability if we hold off?
It's not that we won't have availability, it's if this, again, and everything is the what-if situation. You know, if we do have to take this truck out of the fleet, then we will be needing to either contract out, when, if we're talking during the snow period, then we would be contracting out for snow removal in that area, or trying to expand the current routes of other drivers than elongating times in between, as quickly to remove snow. And again, also with the leaf pickup program, we would potentially be expanding that. But again, those are the what-if situations.
And it's not inoperable, it still works, it's just we're trying to replace it.
Yes. It is, it is in service at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Sally, thank you for all the information, I appreciate it. Seeing no other questions, all in favor? All opposed?
No. No.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion fails. Thank you. Next, we have a bid for the Solomon Wells House roof. This is an exciting meeting. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Motion to award the Solomon Wells House roof bid to Youngwood Developers at a cost of $209,125, with funds from the Solomon Wells House Capital Improvement Project account and the Capital Reserve account.
Okay. Sally, you're still here, are you speaking to this one?
I'm still here.
All right, thank you.
Probably hear the next one, too. The...
Let me just interrupt, Delores, did you hear Counselor Lester seconded that motion? Okay, thank you.
I wanted to make sure I got in there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, Sally.
For those of you who don't know, the Solomon Wells House has multiple roofs to it. There are varying types of construction. They are gable roofs, flat roofs, and a number of different materials ranging from wood shingles to asphalt shingles, a rolling roof and rubber membranes. And back in 2017, we did a study of the Solomon Wells House exterior, and while we found that the roofing structure along the gutters, the dormers, that it is beginning to degrade, and that there are certain areas in the roof where, I think as Kathy can attest, that you can kind of see daylight. And so, in order to, again, be the stewards of this property, we decided to try to phase the renovations that need to be done on the house. And of course, the first where we want to start is with the roof, because if you secure the exterior and you make it watertight, then anything else that we do, as far as any type of carpentry or exterior work, or then work in the interior, it will be secure, and it will be safe from water infiltration, rodents, and anything else to get into the house. And so, working with Carl Rothbart from Architectural Preservation, we developed a bid spec, we did a mandatory walkthrough of the, of the project. We did receive a number of different bids. They're, they ranged in price, and so we do, we're confident that the pricing that we have received for this will give us the product that we are looking for in the end. And also knowing that this is, you know, a historic, and because it is a historic home in the historic district, we are replacing things in kind. So, it's where there is the cedar wood shingles, we will be placing the cedar wood shingles, where there's the asphalt on some of the newer parts of it. So, we are replacing things in kind as they are now.
Thank you. Has this gone to the Historic District Commission yet, or is that the next step?
It was discussed, however, because we're doing it in kind, we don't have to go to the full meetings, but I have let the staff liaison know of this.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you, Sally. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay.
Three for three tonight.
We have a bid for a salt shed. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move to award the Salt Shed Foundation site improvements based on a bid by DeChaccio Brothers, Inc., at a cost of $341,340.50, with funds from the Salt Shed Capital Improvement Project account and the Capital Reserve account.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Sally, Derek, welcome, Derek. Do you want to give an overview before we ask questions?
Again, this project is to replace the salt shed that is used by Physical Services throughout the wintertime. This is a project that we have been looking forward to doing for the past seven years, at least seven years since I've been here. We have looked at alternative locations to move the salt shed, however, there are none, and we have not been able to find any other local or state office that would be willing to share their current product, so we really are on our own to replace a salt shed. We are looking to do this work prior to changes in any of the state regulations. We have been working with, and we worked with DEEP on replacing the salt shed, because our current salt shed does not have the drainage and containment as the new one would. This is a slight change in the location of the salt shed. We had originally looked to replace it exactly where it is. However, due to some soil issues, we tried to move it to see if we would get better soils. We did not get significantly better soils, but there were some, so it was in our favor to slightly change the location. We bid out this, we did a mandatory walkthrough, we scoped out the project, and we received nine, 12 bids on it. There was a base bid to do the work that would accompany the canopy, and then, and that is, that is the project that we are looking to do at this point, which would get us the new salt shed, the new salt shed and the appropriate site work for that shed, so that we would be complete on that.
Thank you. Are there council questions or comments? Quiet group. Deputy Mayor?
Sally, the new shed, its capacity, will it be bigger or the same as the current?
It's 2,000 tons, which is bigger.
Bigger, okay.
It's a different shape.
I was just asking, sorry, is it, is it the same location, a little bit moved? Can you just comment on?
Yeah, right now, the salt, it's literally moved across the, the yard, closer to the side where the, where the old garage is.
One more, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, sure.
And if we approve this tonight, what is the timing?
We would start it this spring and get it done so that for the, for next season, we would be complete.
Thank you.
Counselor Harley?
Could you just explain the cost and how it increased over the last, since the first time you guys came up here, and the, why it increased so much from that first time?
Go ahead.
Derek Gregor, Town Engineer. Um, just to clarify, are you referring to the first bid for this work?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, as Sally said, we had opted, we only had three bidders last time, we had, have opted to step back and look at other areas of the site where we might get better soil conditions. Um, as she said, we really didn't find much better soil conditions, although we did find better grade, uh, considerations, and in talking with staff further, we felt this orientation and location of the structure would be better than what was originally proposed. Um, as far as costs, uh, it's very comparable to the cost we had received last year. Um, we did have a lower bid, uh, in the last summer for a project, although that was lower, lower to the point where we would have had to do some investigation if that was, uh, acceptable bid or not. So cost-wise, the second low bidder was approximately the same as this one is now. You know, it's all a matter of when you bid late in the year, as we did last year, which was an opening in July, you either get people who don't have work for the rest of the year, and they bid low because they want it, or they have a lot of work and they bid high because they really don't need it. Um, I think we were kind of falling into the, the former with that, where we had some bidders that were competitive. We, we did it again this winter, which is usually the best time to do it, because you get the most competition. Obviously, we got 12 bidders this time, low bid still, you know, in that 340 range. Um, however, you know, that, that is within our estimate, our estimate was 345, they came in 341, um, up to 341,000, so that was our expectation, they are within our expectations of what we expected to get.
Okay, one more?
Yeah.
Since it's in the, uh, in wetlands, could you just explain how to, how to keep the salt out of the wetland?
Yeah, the way this...
If it escapes from...
Yep. Uh, currently, the existing shed is three-sided, so there's a lot of exposure to the atmosphere, a lot of salt, where we load is outside of the shed area that it is now, so there's a lot of direct salt runoff into the wetland. With the new structure, it's an enclosed building, except for a 20-foot wide by 38-foot door, that will have the ability to keep the salt, uh, away from the elements to the extent we can, and the site is graded so that when we do have runoff, if there is salt that is in it, it will go through a grass swale, flow into a small sedimentation basin, and then overflow to the wetlands. So DEEP was very favorable, um, to the project for the reason of the structure itself, as well as providing better accommodations to keep the salt out of the wetlands, that small sediment basin can be periodically dug out and maintained by staff, um, to keep it on site. And this project had gone through a local and wetlands approval for that.
Thanks.
Anything else? Counselor L.
I'm sorry, this is the first I'm hearing of the moving of the, the salt shed. Now, we originally, it was going to go on the same footprint as the current one, but maybe move just a little bit, just because it's a, the concrete footing is a little bit bigger than the wood that it's currently there. You mentioned the old garage, whereabouts, so if I'm facing the entrance to the, uh, transfer station, and the building is on our left, and then further to the left is the, uh, uh, overhang for the pumps, whereabouts would the salt shed be in relation to that?
It would be more behind the pumps in the brick building to your left, closer to I-91. So we've rotated it about 90 degrees, so now instead of it running more, uh, north-south, it's running more of an east-west orientation.
So, is that where the, the plows are kind of lined up right now? Not the plow trucks, but the plows in front of that, that building right there?
It'll, it'll, it'll be off the end of that building, about 50 feet from the dog pound. If you know where the dog pound is, it'd be about 50 feet off of the dog pound.
Okay. Would there be enough foliage, or, I'm putting my hat from HDC on because of, you know, what's the visual impact of this going to be for either 91, Marsh Street, Old Weathersfield?
The visual impact, and we discussed this with HDC, there, you're going to see it, and you're going to see the building, and the pitch of the roof of the building is such that we didn't go with a barrel type, we went with more of a barn-looking type of, of material, um, but the, the structure is what it is, it's a rather large structure, and you are going to see it. What you will see, though, is instead of a dilapidated, falling-down structure, you'll see something that is being well-maintained, and, um...
Remember, this is Old Weathersfield, they like...
Right, and that's, and we had this, and we, we had these conversations, um, you know, yes, there is, there is some foliage there, there are trees, there's a tree line, there are other things, but there is no getting way, you will, you will see this building.
And then, take me back a couple months ago, the color was white, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
All white? Is there an option, and I, ever since voting on that, I've always, you know, kind of second-guessed my vote, and then I drive down the, you know, Merritt Parkway, I see some brick structures, I go down the Garden State Parkway, I see these enormous, but, you know, they have more money than we do, somehow. Um, they're doing it right, but not the town, I mean, by the state funding on the Garden State Parkway. Uh, is there any way we can get a cover that doesn't look like it's a, you know...
Bright light.
The roof of a Astrodome or something like that?
There are, there are different color options, however, we don't want to go too dark, because the light does allow, you know, also some daylight in the actual structure itself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, there are more towards the beige tones, um, available to us, and it's something that we can...
Is there a cost difference?
Did we, well, we've already...
We haven't purchased.
Right.
We haven't made, we, we got the approval last summer for the purchase of the canopy, we haven't done it yet. Um, they did have other options, uh, green, beige, earth tones, um, I don't recall offhand, to be honest with you, if there's added cost to go with another color, I don't believe there was, but we'd have to confirm that with the manufacturer.
I, I would just, you know, on a, you know, preference of, you know, visual, I would, you know, welcome any kind of additional, uh, investigation, whether or not, you know, if it, if, is there's little to no additional cost, great, um, but if you could take a look to see if there are other options out there for that.
Yes. Color was one thing HDC did not comment on.
There's a reason for that.
Any other questions?
Counselor Latina? In reading this particular, uh, resolution, do I understand that the CIP Reserve Fund is going to be then, um, $17,000 less, so that we can add that into this?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
And so then the total cost of this project would be $557,180?
Uh, no, um, wait, let me just look at, we're going to take, uh, out of the salt shed project, $324,204, and out of CIP Reserve, $17,135.
So the total cost of a new salt shed, with the foundation, with the canopy, with everything, is what?
Three, oh, with the canopy, oh, okay, with just the foundation, for those two numbers, it's 341,340 for the base bid, and then the canopy cost, do we...
The canopy cost was, uh, it's listed here, um, it's 215,840, so your, your first comment is correct, the total cost is 557.
Okay, I'm going to be voting no, because I think this is an outrageous amount of money for something like this, and I understand the complications, but I'm not willing to authorize this, so thank you so much for your hard work.
Hey, Counselor Forrest?
Thanks. I think on balance, um, the requirements of the salt shed, and, and one of the major things I'm concerned about is, if we don't act now, what are we risking in the future? Whether it's a new location for the salt shed, actually having to purchase land to then put it on, because we've had trouble finding alternative locations, and then, of course, the environment and the current condition of the salt shed, which does appear that it was built at the time of the settlement of the colony, of Weathersfield, uh, from all the pictures that we saw in it. I think that I, I don't want to risk it being, uh, 300 and some odd thousand now, and then ending up to be 600,000, two, three, not too long from now, I think that, that risk is real. Uh, on the, on the second side, is, this has been an ongoing conversation for seven years, and, uh, not something that is new, just came up to us, we know it's been an ongoing need, uh, and, uh, it seems like now is the right time, and the appropriate time, to be able to act on this particular. As we had in previous comments, of course, there is always concern regarding the budget, which we did have and approved all of the items here today, but this is one that clearly has had its longevity, it clearly has its need, it clearly has its risk if we don't act now, which may be much more painful in the future. And so I think now, I would encourage my fellow counselors to vote yes in order to, in some respects, put this to bed, with Counselor L.'s consideration to the color, which I think was legitimate, uh, and, uh, move the town forward with some, some good new infrastructure, which, uh, in its current condition, um, I'm unwilling to allow the environment to suffer, especially if there is any type of minor flooding down there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Dolores, did you get that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Derek, thank you, Sally, appreciate your time. Okay, we have, um, some resolutions for introduction, and they will be acted on at our second meeting in March, and we'll move to the minutes. Do I have a motion for the January 22nd regular meeting?
Motion approved the minutes of January 22nd.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, are there any, um, corrections to those minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Um, we have the meeting minutes of February 4th. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the meet, minutes of February 4th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, are there any changes to these minutes? Okay, see...
I have one.
Oh. Did you know someone needs them?
Better find it now.
Okay.
Okay, on, uh, page five, Dolores?
Mm-hmm.
The January 22nd, when we talk about the, um, the dump truck, uh, I said bring in outside contractors, it wasn't to help them fix the vehicles, it was to bring outside contractors in to do the snow plowing.
Any other changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention, Dolores.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Latina. Um, and we will move back into public comment. So anyone from the public would like to speak tonight? Mr. Colantonio, come on up.
Good evening, Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Uh, it's amazing, I moved to this town in 1973, 73, February 1973. At that time, the garbage was being collected by the town, they would come to the backyard, they would take the garbage, it was great. Few years later, it went private. I've been coming right here now for a long time, and I, I see the discussion that, that takes place. A truck, 50, 50,000 miles, only 13 years old, 14, whatever it is, they're replacing it, or, come right here, they want to replace it. I have an old truck, I never washed it, and it's still going, 1998, it's beautiful, 150,000 miles, it's amazing. How can it be? You take care of a truck, and 13 years, it needs to be replaced, I never take care of my truck, and it's still going. Is it time to, to take physical services, private? Have we ever checked it out, to see if, if the private can do a better job for us and save money? After all, every single year, the taxes keep on going up, you have to wonder why. I mean, really, you know, why do they go up all the time? And like I said last time, too, that basically, you take a similar job in private versus government, the one in private costs, what, 17% less than the one in public? With no accountability. That's sad. Going back to Morrison Avenue, I guess, I've been complaining all the time. Lesser and, uh, and Mr. L., they came last year, and they agreed with me, something needs to be done, people go too fast, nothing is happening. How long does it take? The only answer I got is, is too many stop signs. Been requesting meetings, I guess, I guess, you know, next, next month, we have a new manager, probably, probably going to get some place. But how long does it take? I see stop signs where you don't even need it, at the Job Lot Restaurant, at a store right here, when you try to come out, there is a stop sign for whatever reason, you can say it's private, we don't have anything to do, but I'm sure that that, the site for that plan was, was, must be reviewed by the, the engineers right here, by the town, and yet, every, you know, the stop signs, it's there, sometimes I feel like it says, wow, I should steal it and put it on Morrison Avenue, but that would be against the law. It's another thing, too, you know, every time we have a meetings, we see the same people. I've been asking a lot of questions over the past 10 years, I've been retired for 10 years, and I never get an answer. I made a comment regarding now, about a month ago, the, the driveway on the Walker Hill Road and the driveway of, uh, the school, those signs are completely atrocious. There is a sign at Ridge Road and, 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 what is it, Prospect? You cannot even see it. I made a comment a couple years ago, that coming out of Route 15 into Silas Dean, you know, on the, on that ramp, you have to yield for the, for the traffic coming from Hartford. And I said, why? When you come from Hartford to Weathersfield, there is only one lane, and then that lane has to go, can go right on the ramp, or can go left on Hartford Avenue, and then two more keep on going straight. Why? Did anybody ever check with the state, I know it's a state road, but did anybody ever check? Probably not. So, to me, the past 10 years, even though, you know, I, I go home and I get all excited, and it takes me a long time to go to bed, but i- it's a waste of time. I mean, we come right here, we ask the question, and we don't even have acknowledgement, says, you know what, Mr. Colantonio, we saw those signs, and I think you're right, or I think you're wrong, and we're not, we're not going to do anything about it. No. What's the incentive of the people out there? Whenever I talk to them, says, why don't we go to the town hall, and, you know, complain a little bit? You know what they tell me, says, no. Why? They never listen. Is that the idea, is that what we want other people to think about it? And now even like, you know, there's food, are these people in Weathersfield that need food share? I, I hope they get a break on the taxes, because those are the people that need it. My time is up, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Excuse me. So anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Young?
Good evening again, Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. The earlier discussion you had on the federal employees, uh, what caught my ear was that nobody came and asked for a benefit. Out of how many people we have that are federal employees that are under that, that full-load situation, nobody came forward, which, which, you know, I saw people on television complaining, but nobody in Weathersfield. We must have a wealthy group of people. We must, they must not need it, or those others were hoaxes, and making, making a lot of television, uh, broadcasting about how tough it was. Maybe it wasn't really for them. Um, with the chief talking about his cameras, and how we should put $8,000 a year for repairs, or for some kind of upkeep going forward, that's just another eternal life program that we're getting into. I do think we need, need cameras, but maybe he's, maybe we need to find other ways to finance that $8,000 instead of adding on to the budget. finance that $8,000 instead of adding on to the budget, maybe find cost cutting, you know, someplace to reduce costs. We never hear about that from you folks, it's like the state of Connecticut. We all hear about revenue, revenue, the need for revenue and revenue. We don't hear about, oh, we, we're going to cut here, we're going to slash over here, we're going to take another whack over there, and, and we're not going to increase taxes. I don't hear that from you people, and I don't hear it from those jerks that we have up in Hartford either. Every one of them. But then here we go, here in Weathersfield, we have the Salomon Wells House. Wasn't long ago, wasn't long ago, you, you had to do something to the basement wall, which was a lot of money. There was no cost analysis done by the town of Weathersfield, should we do it, shouldn't we do it, is it well worth it, all of that kind of stuff? I didn't hear anything about this one either. And, uh, you, you know, you know, you just keep throwing money, throwing money with no, anything to back it up. Where is backing? You bought, or at least you went on contract to purchase a property in town called the, the, uh, Keisha Farm. You didn't supply us with anything to support your price. You held back your appraisal and you continue to hold it back. And you should have had it out that a public, like any other town would do, but you had to hold it back. And then as I started looking into what other properties cost and other properties that sold, I see a tremendous difference in, in what's sold and what you're purchasing for. Matter of fact, it's more than double the price. And then I see properties that are now on the market, and those properties are much less than what you're going to pay for the Keisha Farm. There makes, there's no sense in that at all. I recommend and I urge you to go back and renegotiate that to stay, to what the, what property is worth today. I've read a number of them, I'm going to read some more to you, because I don't think you folks care. Now here we go, down in Deep River, Connecticut, a house, 48 acres of land, I mean, $850,000. I'm sure you all took a look at that last night when I sent it out to you and others. And that's brand new on the market. I mentioned a moment ago, uh, at the earlier session of public comment, the Fondela Farm down in Berlin, uh, that was 15,700 dollars an acre. It's for sale and it just came on the market 17 days ago. Uh, eight seventy, uh, 87 and 93, South Main Street and East Windsor, 38 acres, little larger than your Keisha Farm, $800,000. That's 20,800 bucks an acre, and you're paying $75,000 an acre. I hope you'll be able to support this, once you put your appraisal out. Then of course, we still have the property down on, on New Burton Avenue, right here in Rocky Hill. 26.8 acres, it's only five or six acres less than the Keisha Farm. Same neighborhood, it's only three or four miles away-
Okay, finish up, Mr. Young, your time's up.
And the price, yes, madam, I'll wrap it up, and the price on that is $900,000. It's only been on the market for 27 days, and, and that's priced at $33,000 an acre, but you've gone on contract for 75. No wonder these dump trucks cost so much money, they know you could, you don't have the ability to analyze anything, you just accept what they all, what they say that you're going to pay. Thank you very much, madam.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Mazzarella?
I'm cutting to my time.
I just put my notepad away.
Tom Mazzarella, 600 Walker Hill Road. So I had a little sidebar with Amy tonight before the meeting and she was giving me a hard time about my statement I made where, all you guys ever do is vote yes, spend money, spend money, so I guess I have to make a, an adjustment. I'm not going to call it an apology, but, you know.
Two meetings in a row, Tom, two meetings in a row.
You know, I, I come to these meetings and I speak my piece and I go home at night and my, I'm like Gus, I can't fall asleep at night, I'm really irritated sometimes. I tell my wife, I don't even know why I go down there, nobody listens to me. So now I got a glimmer of hope, I mean, you, you, you're really messed up, you should have, you should have just voted yes for everything, I would have got frustrated and went away.
Tom, do you want a, do you want a stop sign by any chance, Tom?
I need a stop sign. But I, you know, seriously, um, I don't want you to think that I just make all this stuff up that I come up with. I spent most of the day today researching Sterling trucks and surfing the internet on where parts were available and where they weren't available. I went to a truck service shop, told them, hey, I got a fleet of Sterling dump trucks, you know, the guy says, yeah, I'm sorry to hear that, you know? He said, they're a piece of junk. Well, so I explained the situation and he said, yeah, you know, several years ago, yeah, it was a real dire situation and it has vastly improved. Uh, he gave me a name of, uh, local parts dealer, uh, that moved, they used to have, I guess it was Brainerd Ford or the Ford Truck Dealer on the corner of Airport Road, and that individual is now over at Monaco Ford in Glastonbury and they've set up a heavy truck division. And, uh, the guy's well versed in Sterling parts sourcing. So yeah, uh, like Sally said, there was, they needed a muffler and they had to get one from Kentucky. Well, welcome to the 2019s, you know, you, you order something the other side of the country or a different country, and you put it on a FedEx plane and it's here at 10 o'clock the next morning and, you know, it's much the same as getting the part from Autozone. So, yeah, there's some more cost involved, but the parts are available, um, you know, I just don't want you to think that I'm just making this stuff up, I, I did the legwork and like I said it a couple of weeks ago, I know, everybody up here doesn't have the, you know, spare time to go out and play around with that kind of stuff, but, um, anyways, I appreciate your, your, uh, listening to me. One last comment, um, I was at planning and zoning and I spoke about the color of that salt shed, and you guys got to realize, that is just going to be an absolute monstrosity. It's over 40 feet tall. And, you know, people used to go down the I-91 and say, oh, it's right near the Weathersfield Cove. Now they're going to say, it's right where that big white tent is, and thing is just going to be huge. And, uh, I don't know how the historic district approved that, I don't understand why, planning and zoning said, you know, I said, geez, can't you pick any other color but white? It's going to just stick out like a sore thumb. And I didn't think that's what Weathersfield wanted to be remembered about. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you and have a good night. Take care.